Good evening. I'm happy to welcome all of my fellow board members and call the February 25th, 2020 School Board Meeting to order. Whether you are in attendance here or watching from another location, my colleagues and I are pleased you took the time to join us. We appreciate and applaud your commitment to partnering with us in support of our schools, our students, our staff, and our community. While the Board and Brevard Public Schools staff members are fully committed to doing our best to ensure excellence in Brevard Public Schools, we know that our success depends heavily on an engaged and committed community to work alongside us and help us to continually improve. Thank you for being an active participant in the process. Pam, roll call please.
Mrs. Belford?
Present.
Ms. McDougal?
Present.
Mrs. Deskovich?
Present.
Mr. Susan?
Present.
And Mrs. Campbell.
The Board will, Mr. Susan, the Board will now hold a moment of silent reflection and invite you to join us. Thank you. Matt Reed, Assistant Superintendent of Government and Community Relations, will lead the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I would like to offer my fellow Board members and Dr. Mullins the opportunity to recognize students, staff, or members of the community. Ms. Campbell, you want to start down on that end today?
Yes, I will, because I'm not sure what's going on next door. All right, so today, I shared last week that the Brevard Achievement Center's Arts Festival was going to be going on this week, and I was able to drop by today. It's also going on tomorrow, so if you haven't got a chance, you've got some time to drop by the zoo. We just want to thank the Brevard Achievement Center, first of all, for making this possible. They pay the admission for all of our students, all our BE students and other exceptional ed students that come and participate. But I especially want to thank, give a shout to Student Services, because so many of them were there with the BPS tent and doing art activities with the students, and they were dancing and doing some awesome movement activities, and there was music everywhere, and so it's lots of fun. Also, our Bayside Teacher Academy was there yesterday, running one of the tables for our students, and then also a huge group from Eastern Florida was there today of future educators who helped run the show really for everybody. So just really thankful for all those people who partnered in order for this event to be very successful. I think there's going to be about 1,200 students who will have participated, and each of the classes that brought students had to produce some artwork, and it's on display at the zoo as well. And the public is certainly welcome to be a part, but just want to shout out to all those people who made that possible for our students. Speaking of the zoo, I got to spend some time with Janelle Cummins, who works with the Education Department at our lovely Brevard Zoo, and she showed me some of the new things that are going on, and just really all the wonderful partnerships that our schools have, from Zoo School, which lasts an entire week, to the reading programs partnerships they have, and the grants they apply for so that our students can come in. And I have a fifth grader, you know, when they take the FSA science, and she was telling me some of the standards that they're going through with their curriculum, and I went, recognize that one, and I recognize that one. So they're really just hitting those fifth grade curriculum points that are going to help our students just, you know, see it in real life. It makes it soak in a little better. So really appreciate all the partnerships, and that's, I just mentioned a few of the many things that they do. Our Heritage High School Show Choirs went to Tampa for the International Championship of High School Acapella. Think pitch perfect, but in real life. And they did a fantastic job, so proud of them, dancing and singing and just amazing talent all across the state. And so I just want to congratulate them for a good job there. They represented Brevard well. And then I think that Dr. Mullins is going to talk about it, but I got a chance to pop in, and I know Ms. Deskovich did too, on the large and very large district convening. I'll leave that too to explain what that is. But I just want to thank our leading and learning team for putting such, so much work into that convening. There were districts from all across the state. We were chosen because of the great work that our leading learning teams are doing with our turnaround schools, and just was very impressed. And I heard lots of praise about the event from people across the state. So excited for the good work that you guys did. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. Mr. Susan?
Tonight, we have an individual that I've grown to respect in many ways that's retiring. I wanted to give a shout out to Tom Fitzgerald, who is, you're going to be here, you're going to talk? Okay. So I'll save it for then. I also wanted to say that on Saturday, there was a drone race, all right, and more and more schools are joining on now. This one was at West Shore. They're moving around to different schools. And the technology that is occurring, I did have to give a shout out to Ms. Lucden from Choice, you know, Shereen? I got to say it right, because I say Shirlene sometimes, she gets really angry at me. So Ms. Lucden is what I always say, but she actually goes out and works with them on the drones. Like, she went out to some of the schools and she said, hey, you know, how can I help you? And she spent a lot of time working with the Johnson program, where they're 3D printing and they're using some of the stuff that we had before. So that is, I want to give a shout out to her. And then also, I'm going to send you guys an email where they're going to be racing at the Innovation Games, and then they have a big drone race at the Astronaut Memorial Foundation. We're going to be racing the big rockets and stuff like that in April, so it's really cool stuff. And then I did want to also say that the Innovation Games are March 6th. You guys should put it's the day after our actual workshop that we have. So I think that we could come to that. Gibbs, I think it's something you should come to, you know, you could come down there and watch it for a little bit of time. So.
Mr. Gibbs?
Sorry, Mr. Gibbs. And then I also wanted to say, we're in the process of going through a challenge here where we're going to be running, and I wanted everybody to know that I am challenging Dr. Mullins in this process, and I am ready to take him down. Now, I know that he's a runner, and I know that I'm not in the best shape in the world, but I think I've got a chance here. So I'm going to start trying to challenge you to the miles that you're running. And I did want to send out a formal bid protest. I also wanted to protest, I was under the understanding that you may have, pass that down to him, he may have filed for some extra miles that he didn't actually deserve. So I think he jumped the gun a little bit. So I'm filing this, these are the rights, Matt Susan's right to protest and dispute the validity of the running contract. And then this is the, the actual, Gibbs, this is the actual protest regarding the illegal count of miles that you submitted ahead of the official start. So I put this here, you can read some of the documentation. But you better be ready, Mullins, because it's about to get real, and you're going down, man.
Mr. Susan, I don't have to get ready because I run regularly.
Listen to this, he's already talking.
I told him you turned in 5.7 miles, and that's what led to this, because he hasn't gotten off the couch yet, so.
I would like you guys to know that I actually went out and purchased a Fitbit for this, all right? Big deal, right? Like, I'm, this is, we're going to get ready here, Mullins. And I look forward to sending in my miles and taking you down, man. So, let's go.
Game on.
All right. Hey, wait, you guys got the bid protest, right? You got that? Okay, I'm serious about it. He only has three miles right now.
I gave him three.
All right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Susan. Ms. Deskovich.
Are you really finished, Mr. Susan?
Yeah, but can I wear this for a little while?
Sure.
Whole meeting if you desire.
I thought you were going to play music.
I am. I'm waiting for him to talk, and now I'm going to play it over.
We're just a ball of laughs tonight. Okay. Let's see, JA Business Blast Off Challenge again this year. So a huge thank you to JA and for the sponsors that helped put on this event. It's kind of like our local Brevard Shark Tank for our high school students. And I was able, and I think Ms. Campbell, we were judges at the first round. We were in different groups, so I'm not sure who, was your team the winner, the ultimate winner this year?
The team from my group actually won the whole thing.
That was mine last year. So congratulations to the winning team. They were from Viera High School. They were called Team Safe School. And for their teacher, Kat Armstrong, and their volunteer who spends countless hours working with them, helping them develop their business plan, some very in-depth studies they do to prepare market analysis, and they learn, they learn a lot of great business skills. So their volunteer, thank you to Mr. Steve Davis for helping them, and to JA for putting that on. Also, I want to thank Ms. Lisa Elam. She has been working within our elementary schools on a program called No One Eats Alone. And I was able to stop by Sea Park Elementary School last week and see, she was working with the counselor there. We also want to give her a shout out, Ms. Schroeder. And they worked together to put on for third through sixth grade, they had a lot of things going on, and one of them was they gave everyone a half of a heart with numbers on it, and you had to find someone that had your matching number and sit with them and learn some new things about them during lunch. And so I, you know, I kind of moved around the room and sat, and it was fun to see the kids interacting and with kids they weren't, they were familiar with but didn't know things about. And then they had some activities going on also in the back of the cafeteria. They put a huge tree on the wall, and the kids had to write some nice inspiring things and put leaves up. And it was really a great uplifting experience. So we need more of that going on. On Friday night, Dr. Mullins, were you going to talk about the Freedom Banquet, or?
Go ahead.
Okay. We had the NAACP, we had a whole table for Brevard Public Schools senior staff in the back, and Dr. Mullins and I were there. And it was a very special treat for us, because our principal from Stone Middle School, Mr. Hillary Poole, was the keynote speaker. And I knew that he had gone to Stone and Palm Bay High, but that's the depth of what I knew. But when he spoke, he kind of unfolded a whole history of how deep his roots are in this community. And in the audience was his mother and his grandmother, I believe. His wife and daughter were there, cousins. It was just, it was so moving to hear how his, you know, his uncle played a role as the first African American in the community to do this and that. And he's so deeply connected, and now he has the honor of serving as the principal in that community. And the whole, the whole event was just beautiful and very heartwarming. Science Fair, you're covering Science Fair, Dr. Mullins?
Yes.
Okay, I don't want to double do and waste everybody's time. And then what about Sunday's Unity Community Meeting? Do you want to touch on that one?
Which one?
The Unity Community Meeting, the Black History. That was a lot of fun. That was out in Palm Bay. And I'm not sure who the organizer, the city of Palm Bay put that on directly. But the highlight for me, other than the history and the unfolding and just the celebration that was going on, was the Heritage High School Marching Band, which I had never heard before, embarrassed to say, because, have you all heard them? They're like, I'm sure you have, Katie, that's in your district. They are unlike any marching band I've ever experienced. They, their instruments go flying, and they're dancing and shaking, and their drum majors wear like sports outfits and whistles and dance almost better than the drill team that's with the, with the marching band. And that was in the community center there out in Palm Bay, so it was very loud. And I actually was sitting with Mrs. Mullins down there, and I think we were, we were, we were jamming in the bleachers. It was very impressive. So I appreciate their talents and their, their teachers that have trained them up to perform like that. And for the city of Palm Bay for putting on that event and all those that participated and spoke to Unity in our community. That's everything. Thanks, Ms. Belford.
Thank you, Ms. Deskovich. Ms. McDougal?
Thank you. If you've noticed, we all have the same shirts on. This is our kindness symbol from Tropical Elementary School. And I want to give a shout out to Barb Wilcox and her kindergarten class, who started this. And this is our anniversary. A year ago, we here at Brevard Public Schools had a proclamation that this was going to be the symbol that we use for kindness in our school system. But also, others, other communities around Cocoa Beach, Cape Canaveral, all of our, I think even Rockledge, I think everybody kind of got on the bandwagon and also has proclamations that this is a symbol. They were just up in Tallahassee and were honored with, I always mess up his name, Tyler.
Don't say cirrhosis.
Saroy.
Saroy, I'm not, I know it's not cirrhosis, it's Saroy. And he honored them with the proclamation that this is a symbol we're using for Kindness Week this past week. So shout out to Barb Wilcox and her kindergarten class, and it's an amazing class. It really is a fun class to go to, and they are so excited, and they've done a lot of wonderful things. So I want to shout out to that. And then I want to shout out to a couple of our media specialists, who with Literacy Week have done some really creative things. And first, I'm going to talk about Cocoa Beach Junior/Senior High School, and they have it, book it and bake it. And so what it is, the students go ahead and participate, there was 109 students that participated in this event, with 54 cakes. And what they do, you read a book, and then they make a cake to go along with their book. So the overall winner was A Beautiful Mind, and this cake was amazing. It had a brain on it. I was just so impressed. And that was one by Tess and Olivia. Then the next one was the most creative, was My Side of the Mountain by Riley. And then interesting one was the book 1984, and it had Big Brothers Watching You, and that was very, that was, they're all very creative. I'm hoping they're on their webpage. So if you want to see some of these cakes, you need to see them. They're amazing. That was by Ricardo and Lana and Rachel. And Soul Surfer was the best object cake. And then The Hobbit was the best scene. And so these are all kids who read the books, and then they went ahead and baked a cake. And they were pretty fantastic. Then another school I want to give a shout out to is Edgewood, and of course, the 20-book challenge. How's everybody doing with that? I finished my 20 books. All right. Oh, my goodness gracious. So again, I want to give a shout out to Erin Warchester at Edgewood, and she's putting together a fun event for them, and that's coming up. And last but not least, I want to give a shout out to State Farm Insurance, who awarded a $5,000 grant to Cocoa Beach Junior/Senior High School for their fitness, health, and wellness program, where they can go ahead and buy equipment for athletics. And so I want to give a shout out to the State Farm agent Sarah Houston. So thank you very much, and that's all I have.
Dr. Mullins, I believe it is your turn.
Uh-oh.
All right. I want to just come back to the large and very large convening. All right, Mr. Susan, do I show you this? Somehow, I think drinking the soda is contradictory to getting in shape.
It's not even caffeinated.
Vitamin C in it.
I'm not worried. The large and very large convening is a, the Florida Department of Education calls on a district every year to host this convening. And they reached out to Brevard Public Schools and said, we want to, we want you to share your success from last year where we had all of our schools rise in school grade, no D or F schools in our district. And the theme of the, I believe it was, Ms. Klein, you can help me, sustaining systems of success. And so I had the opportunity to address, there was over 100 people there. Deputy Chancellor was there from the DOE. And there was a large group session, but then there were breakouts. And our staff led the breakout sessions, or many of them, for different districts across across the state. And just a phenomenal representation of Brevard Public Schools sharing the, the systems that we have put in place that have sustained success. So want to do a shout out to Ms. Klein, Dr. Sullivan, particularly Tara Harris, who was the event planner extraordinaire. It was, the DOE said, one of the best convenings I've ever seen. So just very proud of our team for, for hosting that and sharing and exchanging what we're doing here with other districts. So Saturday evening concluded our third regional science fair just for Brevard County. And if you haven't been to a Science Fair Awards Program, you have got to go. The energy is electric in the room. The enthusiasm is contagious, and these kids are amazing. They're just absolutely amazing. So three secondary regional science and engineering fairs, 81 students, and there had to have been, I don't know, hundreds, hundreds who competed in the Science Fair. 81 of them from 21 different schools will travel to the State Fair in March, and at least six students from six different high schools will be traveling to the International ISF, International Science and Engineering Fair in Anaheim, California in May. Our community sponsors are amazing. I've got to run down the list. Northrop Grumman, $15,000 that'll be used to offset the cost of our kids going to Anaheim, California for ISF. L3 Harris, over $6,500 in student cash awards. Collins Aerospace, over $5,000 for cash awards. Mainstream Engineering, $2,250. Society of Women Engineers, $1,125. The Space Coast Women in Defense gave over $1,000 in cash awards. And Florida Institute of Technology provided over 19 scholarships at different levels, but totaling over $4 million in scholarships to our science researchers. So let's give our sponsors a round of applause. But we know the reality is that our kids wouldn't be set up and prepared and challenged for that level of success if it weren't for our amazing science research teachers across our district. Our elementary teachers, we're one of the few districts who still have a Science Fair in the elementary schools. So that is a great feeder system, and then our sponsors would come alongside. And Lauren Kingsley is our, one of our secondary science resource teachers. I know there are others, but there was a, there was a team of folks, hundreds of ribbons, awards, and they, 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 it goes off without a hitch. So it's really amazing. Want to recognize, Mr. Susan mentioned Innovation Games, March 6th. Northrop Grumman is our title sponsor, and essentially is not only paying for the entire Innovation Games, but also providing lots of support throughout there as well. So want to do a shout out to Northrop Grumman for their great partnership with that. And this past Saturday, was it this past Saturday, Odyssey of the Mine, or this past week, Odyssey of the Mine Competition State Regional Tournament was here in the building, one of 10 throughout the state, actually at Viera High School, I'm sorry. So we had over 100 teams competing, 600 students from 50 schools, and we will now send 23 teams from 17 different schools to advance to the state tournament, where they'll compete for a chance to move on to World Finals at Iowa State University, at Iowa State University on May 27. And every year, we, we have our kids, they bring home trophies and awards. If history repeats itself, we'll send those 80-some students to State Science Fair. Our district represents less than 3% of the students in the state of Florida, but we historically bring around 30% of the first place, first in place awards at the State Science Fair. So our kids have an amazing preparation to compete, not only in our district, but across the state and across the country. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Mullins. Ms. McDougal circling back?
I'm so sorry. I inadvertently left off the name of the media specialist at Cocoa Beach Junior/Senior High, and that's Shelley Coburn. So I want to give a big shout out to Shelley, who put that whole book it and bake it together. So thanks, Shelley.
And Ron Bradley's back. How we doing, Ron? Where's he at? Good to see you, bud.
And we are happy to have you back, Mr. Bradley. Thank you so much for joining us tonight. All right, I have just, anyone else we need to circle back on before I wrap up? Okay. So Dr. Mullins and I had the opportunity, I think it was a couple of weeks ago now, to attend the Titusville Chamber Partners in the Business of Education Luncheon. And we are really blessed in the fact that the Titusville Chamber does so much to support our schools in so many ways. And this is an annual event that they do. Each of our schools gets to nominate three of their partners in education to be recognized at this particular event. They provide lunch, the schools attend. This year, I think, was really special in that we had multiple schools that were able to set up tables at the event and kind of publicize to the partners in education, the great things that are going on in their schools. And so many thanks to all of those partners in education, as well as our partner in education coordinators, who make it all possible, because, you know, people don't just walk in the door and partner. It takes a lot of work to make that happen. And so we certainly appreciate all of the effort that goes into that. We know how incredibly important community support is in the success of our schools, and we appreciate them immensely. Mr. Susan and I had the opportunity last week to attend events at Jackson Middle School. Mr. Susan was there with the Tied Together event, which is a wonderful event that I think we've mentioned before. And I was there for the Career Day portion for those students that weren't participating in Tied Together. And once again, phenomenal community support for that event. I think one of the most popular tables at Career Day was actually the Funeral Director. And then right after that was, was Police and Fire, and so.
He got a portion of the casket.
Yeah, he had a portion of a casket and an urn, which I think, you know, the kids were interested in seeing. And so, but then, of course, Titusville Fire, who also is everywhere, we need them all the time, supporting our schools, and Titusville Police were other, other really popular ones. So, but many thanks to all of the community members that came out to support that. Interestingly enough, Dr. Mullins and I, this morning, were at Astronaut High School for a presentation to the Titusville Chamber Board of Directors. And want to thank Marcia Gadke and all of the Board members for coming out to our schools. They have alternating business meetings every other month, and so on their off months, Marcia is coordinating for them to go out into the community. And their first stop out in the community for their board meeting was to join us at Astronaut High School this morning. Dr. Mullins did a great presentation, just sharing with them kind of the state of the school's information. And then all of the Board members actually went out into classrooms during Astro Hour. Astro Hour is a time for students to get additional support or, or clubs or whatever. And so the Board members went out and worked with our students in the classrooms and visited the Eagle's Nest, which is their food pantry that they have at Astronaut for the students. And so we're able to see kind of some of the need there at the school as well. So many thanks to them for coming out and learning a little bit more about our schools. And there was a lot of discussion about, they just didn't realize, and, and they are wanting to do more to support our schools. One of the big chamber partners, who's been active in our community for quite a while up in Titusville, said, you know what, our, our schools really need us to wrap our arms around them. And so I think, I think it was a great opportunity for all of them to learn a little bit more and really see how important that partnership is for our school's success. And then I'm just going to piggyback a little bit on what Ms. McDougal said about our students, our TK1 tropical students up in Tallahassee. They also, just because I want you guys to know how incredibly cool this trip was for them, Representative Saroy kind of started the ball rolling for them, and his staff coordinated a great day for them while they were in Tallahassee, which included getting a signed document from the governor. They also got tours of both the House Chamber and the Senate Chamber. So Representative Saroy was the sponsor in the House, and Senator Wright was the sponsor in the Senate to get that resolution through. And so both, both of them and their teams, as well as the governor's office, were just really incredibly gracious with our students. They got to do a scavenger hunt in the historic Capitol, so they got to go over and see all of the historic elements as well. So many thanks to all who made that trip possible to them, and obviously for the teachers and students for all the work that they've done.
So I was up there when they were up there, and the kids were in the House of Chamber, they were in the House Chamber, and it's where the, all the House members sit. And he said, go ahead, sit in the chairs. And what's the first thing they start doing? They hit all the buttons. And he's like, whoa, 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 whoa. And he's like, "Whoa, whoa, whoa, wait." And the whole thing starts lighting up on the top up there. And, but it was the cutest thing. They all got to sit there and move around, and he did an amazing job. And he read the governor's thing. It was just, it was, those moments, those kids will remember forever. And we're so lucky to have a school system that promotes it. And, you know, it was great.
And representatives that support it as well.
Yep. He did an amazing job.
Absolutely.
Ms. Belfort?
Yes, sir.
I forgot to announce one very important thing.
Oh, gosh. I have to put the headband back on?
At, our Cocoa High Lady Tigers will be traveling to Lakeland on Thursday to compete for the Final Four Basketball Championship, four A Championship. It's the first time they will be traveling to the Final Four since 1979.
Wow.
So, this is exciting for our Lady Tigers. So, go Tigers. Thursday noon, they'll be playing, so everyone cheer them on. You can watch online.
Awesome. Thank you, Dr. Mullins, for catching that. All right, this brings us to the adoption of the agenda. Dr. Mullins?
Ms. Belfort and members of the board, on tonight's agenda, we have administrative staff recommendations, a presentation, seventeen consent items, and one action item. You also have the yellow supplemental agenda, which are changes made to the agenda since being released to the public. Items A seven on administrative staff recommendations and F eleven on student expulsions received revisions. Item F eighteen on salary enhancements for non-bargaining personnel is in addition.
What are the wishes of the board?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Ms. Duskovich. Is there any discussion? All right, please vote.
Things get faster every meeting.
Right.
Look at that.
Except my screen's moving around. I can't catch my vote link. Okay. And the motion passes five zero. Dr. Mullins, will you please let us know about our administrative staff recommendations?
There is one person on, there is one person on this evening's agenda for the board to consider.
What are the wishes of the board?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Ms. Duskovich. Any discussion? Please vote. And the motion passes five zero. Dr. Mullins?
I would like to take this opportunity to recognize Mr. Tom Fitzgerald, Director of Information Technology on his upcoming retirement at the end of June. Just as a personal note, Tom is the epitome of going above and beyond, not just in his professional life, but in his personal life and his impact on the community, his work with Veterans Affairs, and just, just the leadership he has provided to our, our tech department. Tom, you will leave big shoes to fill, but it is a, it is a time well-deserved, and we wish you only the best in your retirement. But you've still got a few months with us, like I said, so we've still got a lot of work to get done before you go. But congratulations on your retirement, and we wish you the best.
Great, thank you. Wow. Thank you, Dr. Mullins. The bad news is very difficult to summarize a career that started in 1993. The good news for me is I'm the only staff recommendation tonight, so I got about thirty minutes, I think. So, and the better, better news for the public and, and the board is I only need about three. So, to summarize, I did start in 1993 as a teacher at Astronaut High School, evolved quickly into technology when technology was just up and coming. I was involved with the first networks that we had here at the school district, the Net Days, for those that were around, remember those, where we had students, parents, and volunteers, and we threw cable over the light fixtures, and we thought that was okay. But it worked, and happy to say that I was part of that when Brevard County Schools was first in the state to get a ten-meg connection to the internet. Oh, boy. Ten meg. Today, we have twenty gig, which is about two thousand times more powerful than what we had in the mid-nineties. At that time, we had about five hundred computers, most of which were terminals, dumb terminals in the front offices. And we started to raid, ransom road with NASA and all of the NASA contractors, and rebuilding machines, giving them to teachers to get expanded into the classroom. So, today, we're, we're at about eighty-five thousand computers. The challenges are just as great when we are evolving technology to what they are today, because now, technology is overwhelming all of us, and the budget's just not keeping up with it. So, our challenges are great as far as sustainability and a lot of the technology fronts that we face. The good news is that we have a great, I've had a great career of tremendous people. I was a former Marine and also a police officer, and this is the longest longevity career that I've had and the most rewarding. And it's all because of the people. The cabinet, I, I see such great leadership and so good cohesity at our front, and our mission is, is top. So, it's going to be very difficult to leave, but my wife and I are veteran advocacy, and our pickleball game is calling us, and I'm going to try to catch up with Mark Elliott and take him on. But I owe a lot to my, my wife Denise, who, who supported me through my intensity and my drive to contribute to this, this great organization. So, so many people to thank you. Thank you all. It's going to be tough, but I'll, I'll still be around.
Tom, I wanted to say thank you for everything that you've done, for me, for the school system. The first time I met Tom, he said, "I'd like to meet and talk about some of our IT systems." And he started walking me back into the netherworld of ESF when they were painting all the rooms. So, I don't know if you guys ever watched those mafia movies, but when he was bringing me back there, there was viscuing on all the walls, and it was starting to take me back there, and I was like, "This is not going to turn out good for me." But Tom was all the way in the back with all this plastic wrapped around him, and I'm standing in there, and he's just so excited to show me what the bandwidth of the different schools was and everything else on his computer. And he was, I was like, "This guy is crazy." And then, I got to know him more and more, and I was like, "Yes, he is. He's amazingly crazy." And everybody that I ran into, from soup to nuts, from Mims to Miko, even people that worked not inside the schools, but actually out in the community, say that you are the top-notch human being and person for Brevard, and they love having you around with your work that you had with, and seeing your wife and you up there in Cocoa at the museum that day, and how passionate you both are, committed to a cause, both with the school district, but in the private life. That's what we all strive to be. And with you and what we went through with some of the other stuff, and just keeping this district moving, and IT and the stress that we've put on us in general, you've, you've pulled us through, man. And I appreciate everything you did for me, and I appreciate everything you did for this district, and I look forward to helping you in however I can up there. So, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Susan.
Oh, and bring Rodden Bradley to your pickleball game, because he seems like he's got a lot of energy these days. So, here it comes.
Thank you, Mr. Susan. And thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald, for all of your service to the district. We appreciate you immensely. All right, Dr. Mullins, will you please let us know about tonight's presentation, which I am so very excited about?
This evening, we have the pleasure of hearing about Sources of Strength, a program at Titusville High School. And here to share information about the program is Principal Jennifer Gonzalez and Peyton Cook, Titusville High School student, who is also an active member of Sources of Strength. So, Ms. Gonzalez and Peyton, take it away.
Well, good evening, and thank you, Dr. Mullins, and members of the board for having us here. It is my honor to be the principal of Titusville High School. We are really excited to share information with you about Sources of Strength, and specifically about Sources of Strength at Titusville High School. So, I'm going to pass it over to Peyton Cook. She's a sophomore at THS, very active member in Sources of Strength.
So, we are Sources of Strength, and our main goal is to spread hope, health, and strength into every corner of our community. So, a little background on Sources of Strength. Personally, for THS, it's not a club. We're actually an outreach program dedicated to improving the mental health and just overall well-being for everyone at Titusville High School. We use positive and supportive means to reach out to our peers, teachers, and anyone we possibly can through the components of the Sources of Strength wheel. We like to focus on the positive messages and look at the positive side, such as stories of success, like this person went through really hard times, but they're better now, and they're here to share their story, and they feel better, rather than ones that are more, you know, downers. We use this wheel that has different aspects, including family support, positive friends, mentors, healthy activities, generosity, spirituality, medical access, and mental health. All right. Some of the goals and impacts of Sources of Strength, this is the proof that it works. It was founded on the ideas to increase youth and adult connectedness and increase peer leaders' school engagement. And now, we've seen that there's been some really amazing impacts from this, such as peer leaders in larger schools, they're found to be four times more likely to refer a suicidal friend to an adult. And there's been an increase in positive perceptions of adult support for suicidal youth and the ability of, of seeking help. Next, we have a video that we put together with some of the members and just students at Titusville about how they feel about Sources of Strength.
Hi, I'm Samir Mesny, and I've been a source of strength for a year. Sources of Strength helps everyone connect around the school.
Hi, I'm Helen Sluga, and I was a student of Titusville High School that isn't a member of Sources of Strength. I am going to highlight the aspects of my day that are changed by this club. For example, Fridays, they play like happy music over loudspeakers throughout the hallways, which always puts a smile on people's faces. And also, they organize presentations. For example, when To Write Love on Her Arms came into school, and they did a presentation in the auditorium, and people got to go and see it, and it really just illuminated the important aspects of life that people don't necessarily talk about in their day-to-day life.
Guys, I'm Mickey McItarian. As some of you may know, I'm a junior currently, and I've been a source of strength since sophomore year. And to me, it's a great way to become more balanced overall in life, and it's impacted Titusville High School campus by creating more positive atmosphere for all of us.
My creative strength and component of the Source of Strength wheel is spirituality. I do a lot of volunteer work with my church, so what I do at church, I'm able to use and help me do spirituality with the wheel using Sources of Strength.
Take the stars and write a favor to your teacher's name on it. And who, who are the teachers that each of the kids look up to, or if they need someone to talk to, they're very trusted adults on campus.
I'm Julia Agoff. I'm in tenth grade, and this is the first year I've been a part of Source of Strength.
How has Sources of Strength had an impact on Titusville High School?
We do many activities, like sidewalk chalk, and sidewalk chalk helps the kids who are sad and looking down, and it helps them get through the day by looking at the sidewalk.
My name is Andrew Kusselwitz.
What grade are you in?
I'm a sophomore.
And how long have you been a part of Source of Strength?
This is my first year ever being a part of this.
And what made you want to join Source of Strength?
I just, I like the overall idea of trying to spread positivity, even about individuals, especially since high school is one of the most mentally impacted, like teenage group pretty much ever. And a big thing that inspired me to join this was when I actually lost my best friend in depression. And ever since then, I've wanted to spread awareness so others wouldn't have to go through what I would do, or what they would do. Writing, writing something sweet down and talking sidewalk. It's just letting people know that they're cared for, and whatever may be possible is definitely better than...
Hi, everyone. My name is Sarah Sluka, and I'm a senior here at Titusville High School. And as someone who's involved in a lot of clubs around campus, it's been really special to see the way the spirit of Sources of Strength hasn't stayed within the club, it's spread outwards like a ripple. So, for example, this year, SGA, we sponsored mental health awareness signs that we put up all around campus to remind people when they walk into school that they're special and they're valuable. And so, I think this club, Sources of Strength, has been completely instrumental in helping us realize just how important it is to be there and to be present daily for those people who need.
Hi, I'm Samir Mesny.
All right. So, this is also some more examples of stuff that we have implemented at Titusville High School to help and kind of show off what we've been doing and working on. At the top, there's a picture, that's one of our meetings that we had, where we had people from the district come to the school and kind of explain, you know, more stuff about sources and how we work, and just like stuff to keep us connected. Also, we've had a bunch of guest speakers come to talk about different things, such as bullying, and how it affects people, and how to rise above that. These are some examples of our Wednesday. Every Wednesday, we come to the school early at around eight o'clock, and we get together, and we alternate days. So, one week we'll do chalk art, and the next week we'll do these sticky notes. So, the chalk art just goes around campus, and we do little positive messages. And it's like Julia said earlier in the video, it gives the kids that are looking down and trying to avoid eye contact, a little thing to see at their feet that tell them that they're great and they can do this, and that things are going to get better. We also have those sticky notes, and we stick them in the bathrooms. So, we'll write little notes like, "Have a great day," or "I like your shirt," or something like that, just to stick around to show people there are people that care. And additionally, we have our Sources of Strength message board outside. The stars have names of teachers on them that students recognize as trusted adults, somebody they can turn to in a crisis, or just to feel a little better about their day. Additionally, we've kind of adopted the idea of nobody eats alone. In high school, it's kind of harder to reach out with that type of thing. So, we've kind of adapted a mindset more so than like a movement. So, anybody that's a member of Sources and just at the school, they are actively looking for people that are sitting alone and people that look lonely, especially during lunchtimes, to go and approach them and be like, "Hey, come and sit with us and make new friends." We had To Write Love on Her Arms, the founder, Jamie, he came and spoke to us about suicide awareness, and he shared a really inspiring story about this girl who overcame really, really bad stuff that she faced in her life. And a lot of kids were severely impacted, and they, we brought out people from the district, we brought counselors, we had people on-site. That way, the kids who saw this presentation, they had the entire day if they needed to go and talk to somebody about it, because it really did strike, struck a chord in a bunch of people, and it really impacted them. And we kind of think we might, we may have saved a couple lives by doing this. And that's it. Thank you, guys, so much.
Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez and Peyton, for joining us this evening. And I understand that Mr. and Mrs. Cook may be with us this evening as well? Yeah? Would you like to stand? So, thank you for raising such an awesome young lady who is impacting, you know, obviously not only making good choices for herself, but really impacting the entire culture of the school. We appreciate it. And thank you for sharing all the great things that are going on at Titusville High School with us tonight. Yes, Ms. Duskovich?
Thank you all so much for coming in and sharing the Sources of Strength program. I, you know, I haven't been on the board too terribly long, but I can look at three years and see the progress that we've made with mental health. And I can't remember how many schools, schools had Sources of Strength in, in 2016, but there was a couple, and they were all two, and they were just in the north area. And now, I believe it's, is it in all of our secondary schools?
Eleven.
In eleven of our secondary schools, and, and probably potentially growing.
The last five will be finished March the 12th.
They couldn't hear that. Can you repeat that?
The last five will be in place by March the 12th. So, not only did I want to thank the young lady for speaking and for her parents for doing a fabulous job, and for the principal for supporting this within your school environment, but I want to thank our student services team, because I know you ladies, and I think we have a few gentlemen, too, work very hard. And the progress that you have made in the last three years with the social and emotional support for our students is, it's ginormous. I know that's not a real word, but it's, it's ginormous, and so, I just want to thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Duskovich. Any other board members wish to make comments? All right. Thank you again for joining us this evening. We appreciate it immensely. All right, at this point, we are at public comments. We have four speakers signed up this evening. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. We have a clock in front of me to help you keep track of your time. When your time is over, you'll be asked to stop and allow the next speaker his or her turn. Always keep in mind that reasonable decorum is expected at all times, and your statements should be directed to the board chairman. The chairman may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement when time is up, personally directed, abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. Should an individual not observe proper etiquette, the chairman may request the individual leave the meeting. Let's all encourage an environment appropriate for our children who may be present or are watching from home. Our four speakers this evening are Anthony Calucci, Vanessa Skipper, Delores Varney, and Jonathan Hilliard. Before speaking, please state your name. The organization... Before speaking, please state your name, the organization you represent, if any, and identify the topic you will be discussing.
My name is Anthony Calucci. I'm the president of the Brevard Federation of Teachers. Tonight, I wanted to share an article with you that I recently read called "The Silencing Effect of Power: Helping Leaders to Listen So Employees Can Speak Up." Transparency and speaking truth to power are generally considered to be desirable attributes of corporate culture. Most leaders would claim to lead organizations where employees are free to speak up and to challenge those in more senior positions. They implicitly recognize that in the absence of transparency and honesty across a hierarchy and between teams, that gets in the way of strong performance. However, we all know that in many organizations, it's not always safe to speak up despite what leaders may say. In a recent major 18th-month study into speaking truth to power, the Wright Conversation in Ashridge Business School, the barriers to transparency were laid bare. The findings unequivocally show that truth-telling is not driven by process, but is something that happens in the moment and in the context of specific relationships. Speaking truth to power is a two-way street. It requires people to speak up and crucially, senior people to listen up. And herein lies the problem. The very word "speaking truth to power" suggests that the problem and therefore the solution lies with those who don't speak, rather than with those who don't or won't listen. It appeals to the courage and moral conviction in more junior staff to do the right thing and so, puts all the risk on those people who have the most to lose. Powerful people simply don't understand what it feels like to feel powerless, especially in settings where people have been spoken at rather than listened to. Hearing the truth starts with senior people daring to be ordinary and be interested in ordinary things. It also requires them to understand their impact on others and to have an iron grip of self-control when they hear things they may not like. Here are five questions to ask yourself about how you enable or hinder those who want to raise their truth with you. Are you honestly interested in other people's opinions? Before you conclude that you are, are you sure you don't have a problem in this area? It is useful to check by asking yourself, "How do you know that you have a reputation for being interested in what others think?" Have you considered how risky it feels for people to speak to you? How do you tend to respond when challenged by different people? Do you welcome challenge or become defensive or dismissive? How aware of you are the political game being played? Politics is an inherent part of organizational life and personal agendas play out all the time in what people choose to say or not to say. What labels do you apply to people? And finally, what do you do and say to enable others to speak? This is knowing what to do to enable others to speak up. It might include anything from reducing status differences. In conclusion, hearing truth starts with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Calucci. Ms. Skipper, I believe you're next.
Vanessa Skipper, Vice President, BFT. There are less than three weeks of the legislative session and while there are still many unknowns, this is what we do know. Today, two bills were heard, Senate Bill 1220 and House Bill 7067. They will continue the voucher expansion and divert even more money away from our public schools. Currently, more than $1.3 billion is diverted to unaccountable and often discriminatory private schools. We will continue to fight this type of legislation. In our county, Covenant Christian School recently fired a teacher for being a lesbian and in its student handbook cites homosexuality as a reason to expel a student. That school has received nearly $1 million in taxpayer funds. This is just one of the many examples of schools with discriminatory practices that receive money that belongs in our public schools, where we educate everyone. Also up today is the House tax package, House Bill 7097, which not only expands tax breaks to major corporations, it also would require school districts that pass capital outlay referendums to share that money with charter schools on a per-student ratio. When districts want to pass a capital outlay referendum, they must show the need for such a tax by spelling out how that money will be spent, on new roofs, new AC units, new schools or replacement schools. They do not assign the funds on a per-student formula, they assign it on need. This legislation would require districts to share this money with charters regardless of need. And remember that very few, if any, of the charter buildings are owned by the public. This means public taxpayer money would be given to a private company for building improvements. I am sure that you are all aware of the steep increase in FRS costs, which will hurt funding and could lead to cuts. I'd like to remind those listening or watching that the School Boards Association, the Superintendent's Association, came out in support of the governor's funding, funding and salary plan when he released it. Perhaps that isn't reflective of each of your positions. However, it would be good for you to express your thoughts to our teachers and lawmakers about how you really feel about the plan. Put it on the record. The governor's plan called for only $50 in the base student allocation and that funding will be used to cover increased costs. Fifty percent of our instructional personnel will be left behind on any state salary plan. While our schools are woefully underfunded, we must be honest that school districts are not completely blameless on the shortfall. What is our plan for salary next year? What is our plan to make sure we have excellent experienced educators in front of our children in our classrooms? I've said it numerous times and I'll say it again. It's clear we can't count on the state to do the right thing with taxpayer money. We need to let the voters decide on what type of educators they want to keep in the classrooms of Brevard. We can use capital funds to fix ACs, build new schools, renovate older buildings, and buy the best technology on the market, but what happens when there aren't excellent experienced educators to teach our children in those buildings? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Skipper. Dolores Barney?
She's gone.
She left? All right, Mr. Hilliard, you are up, sir.
Jonathan Hilliard, fourth-grade teacher at Apollo Elementary School and second Vice President of Brevard Federation of Teachers. I wanna talk in support of our principals. A great principal develops and encourages great teachers. Without great principals, we don't get great teachers. Every, every meeting, I hear the board do shout-outs. Well, I'd like to do a shout-out to my principal, Mr. Frank O'Leary. I know I'm a little biased, but he's an awesome principal. He's strong, he's steady, reactive, as opposed, as, including being proactive. He develops his assistant principals. We have two awesome assistant principals, Tre'loni Wise and Shree Cochran. You know, I looked at it, between the three of them, they have nearly 50 years of classroom experience. Now, I'm not saying there's a perfect formula, but wow, they know what's going on in our communities. They develop, he develops his assistant principals and I would like to encourage our district, when it comes time, that we consider those two assistant principals to move up into a principal position. Strong principals support strong teachers. And without those strong principals, we don't have the teachers that we need. We have a shortage. Principals impact the experience of a teacher, both good and bad. A good principal, a strong principal encourages and supports a struggling teacher, someone that we may end up not keeping in our profession. But a good principal will encourage that person to stick with our noble profession, stick with our kids, and stay in our community. A strong principal will continue to support veteran teachers that have shown that stability in our community for years and years. Strong principals create strong teachers. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hilliard, Ms. Skipper, and Mr. Calucci for joining us this evening. All right. That moves us into the consent agenda, Dr. Mullins.
There are 17 agenda items under this category.
Thank you, Dr. Mullins. Does any board member wish to pull any item from the consent agenda?
It's down here. Yes. It's under Labor Relations.
F-18, I think.
Eighteen.
F-18.
Are you requesting to pull F-18, Mustafa Kevich?
I just wanna comment on it. Do I have to pull it to comment on it?
No, you can comment on it after we have a motion for approval of consent, if you'd like.
Yes, please.
All right, then, seeing no request to pull any items from the consent agenda, I will entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda. Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Ms. Campbell. Is there any discussion? Mustafa Kevich, this is your window.
I, I don't have a lot to say. I just, I didn't want it just to get buried in the consent agenda. This is the actual raise for the rest of our staff and I know several people, Dr. Mullins, that have been working very hard to pull together every single penny to, to give the rest of the staff a substantial raise. And just didn't want it to, to get overlooked, because we, we gave our teachers a raise, we gave 10-10 a raise, and I know the rest of our staff has been wondering when their raise is coming. And so, I can't recall the date of distribution for them.
April 15th.
April 15th, and it is publicly backdated through the beginning of the school year, if I am, if I read all that correctly. So, they will be backpaid for the rest of the year and then the raise will take effect then. So, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mustafa Kevich, and thank you, Dr. Mullins and team, for making it possible. Is there any additional board discussion before I call for the vote? All right, please vote. And the motion passes 5-0. We will move on to the action agenda, Dr. Mullins.
Ms. Belford and members of the board, there's only one item under this category, G-27, which is to hold a public hearing and approve Board Policy 2216, Gifted Education.
Thank you, Dr. Mullins. Is there anyone present this evening who wishes to address Policy 2216, Gifted Education? Is there anyone present this evening that wishes to address Policy 2216, Gifted Education? All right, seeing none, what are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Ms. Kevich. Is there any discussion?
Woo-hoo. Put that, put that in the minutes, Pam.
Did you get that, Pam?
Did you get that in the minutes? Yeah, yeah. One of these and...
All right, seeing no further discussion, I'll call the vote.
That's our final, final vote on that, correct? That was a third reading?
The motion passes 5-0, yes. It is officially policy.
Ladies and gentlemen, Brevard Public Schools, for the first time ever, has a gifted policy. That's a big deal.
It's a huge, big deal. All right. Does any board member have anything further to report? Mr. Susan?
Yeah, I just wanted, I did just wanna take a second and talk about the pre-K and some of the things that they were doing. And really, the thing that came across while I was up in Tallahassee was, with some of the pre-K teachers, was is that Ms. Graul's bill, 1013, redoes a lot of the early learning pre-K and a lot of the VPK sections inside of our legislature. It takes the Office of Early Learning out of an area that may not have been so effective and puts it directly under the DOE. There's also, each one of the pieces that we worked on throughout the last, I don't know, month and a half, have now been submitted up to Tallahassee to the staff. So, we commend Representative Graul's bill. And it was literally three-quarters of what the pre-K teachers and some of them were saying needed to happen. And now, it's just time for them to bring us across the finish line as far as recognizing certified teachers in pre-K. And I'm not sure if that's gonna happen this year, but we definitely did our due diligence. We definitely have moved. And I think that we're in a good position to show a lot of the positiveness and some of the things we saw in Head Start, that is, Dr. Mullins, you're thrived to five. I mean, that's it, right there. That's our mission. And I think this is definitely gonna make a difference in what we do. So, I did just wanna again, give you guys that Erin Graul's bill is phenomenal and we should, you know, if you see her, 'cause you're Kevich, you're friends with her, tell her thank you, 'cause this is great. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Susan, and thank you to all of our pre-K teachers that have been up there advocating on these issues. We, we certainly appreciate it and I think, you know, one big piece that a lot of people are not paying attention to is that move of the...
It's huge.
...the early childhood education into the Department of Education. I think that's one of the things we've been discussing for some time, is that we really should be in an early childhood to 12-plus...
Yeah.
...organization as far as the, our, our state Department of Education. So, that's some, some good stuff taking place. Dr. Mullins, do you have anything else? I'm sorry, were there any other board members that had any additional discussion points before? Dr. Mullins, do you have anything else you'd like to discuss this evening?
I, I'm gonna put her on the spot, but I would like to introduce, this is our first board meeting with our new Chief Financial Officer, Ms. Cindy Lasinski in the back.
Yes.
Wanna welcome you. We're glad you're here and she's gotten off to a great start already. I, I think drinking out of a fire hose is an understatement, but she has done it with great poise and grace and keeps coming back for more. So, she's been a great addition to the team already. So, welcome, Ms. Lasinski. It's great to have you and encourage anyone who hasn't met Ms. Lasinski yet to introduce yourself before the evening is over.
Yes, we are so very pleased to have you. Welcome to the team. Any additional discussion points? There being no further business, this meeting is now adjourned.